They've been maxed out. The first one was a little contentious around parking and sort of other, like a typical, what I would call a community meeting. The second one was in January, very jolly. Everybody was very enthusiastic. We built both models and they said, put this one back because that's our favorite. So they were, they were very enthusiastic and kind of feeding each other. I don't know if it was the, the more of the wine. It was very, it was very, it was very cheerful right at the end of the holidays.
Nice. Excellent.
Well, since we're doing thank yous, obviously I thank Brandon, but I also thank Carrie. She's back here quietly and she builds the model and does a lot of the, you know, so I, I trust them both as a team. But I think we've been really fortunate to have a good process and I, there's a lot of people to thank, but I want to make sure Carrie gets her props back there.
Thank you, Carrie.
We have another meeting beginning right away, but I would love to propose that we take a quick bio break.
Yep.
Nora.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I'll leave this right here. Thanks Jason for the help.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for joining us at tonight's meeting of the zoning and design review board. If you're just joining us or joining us from home, we've been in another meeting talking about the Yountville Commons and it went a little bit long and we needed a little break between. So we're back, starting a little bit late. Thank you for your patience. We will do, I'm calling the meeting to order and we'll do a roll call.
Members Cook.
Here.
Henthorn.
Here.
Topowski.
Here.
Vice Chair Zagorsik.
Here.
And Chair Miller.
Here.
All members are present.
All right. Would you join me in standing and pledging to the allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first order is the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second it.
I second it.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval of minutes. The minutes from January 14th.
Yeah, those look fine to me. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Any public comment? No.
We have to second on the minutes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment on matters not listed on the agenda. Doesn't look like we have that. And so we move on to presentations. There are none. So we're going right directly to the public hearings. The first public hearing is, public hearing A, adopt a resolution number 25022, conditionally approving the design review for remodel and expansion of a single-family residence, construction of auxiliary, of auxiliary structures and new landscaping, and a tree removal permit for the removal of two protected trees at 36 Ivy Court and finding the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. And I need to recuse myself due to proximity to the project. So I will step out.
I'll just clarify, it's your primary residence, correct?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Thomas. All right. Is Carrie leading?
Yeah. So, thank you Chair Miller. I am going to be turning it over to Carrie Sponsrum, our contract planner, who was the case planner for this project, who will be presenting this evening.
Excellent. Good evening, Carrie.
Good evening Chair Miller and Board members. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person with you today, but I am happy to share a couple of projects. The first one being 36 Ivy Court. Just get the slideshow up. Okay, so 36 Ivy Court is located just off of Mulberry Street. Ivy Court is a circular court, fairly short street. The project before you tonight at 36 Ivy is to greatly remodel and expand an existing single-family home. They will be demolishing a small shed in the back and much of the landscaping and replacing with a couple of auxiliary structures and new landscaping. The applications include design review and tree removal permit for two trees. There is a ash tree in the front which conflicts with utilities and a ficus tree in the rear which is within the footprint of the proposed structure. And then for SEQA to declare it exempt under section 15303, 304, and 15061B3. The project scope, again, on the upper slide is the existing home and the lower is the proposed elevation of the new home. They are looking at retaining the existing garage, which includes the walls, the garage slab, as well as the driveway and driveway location. A, the northeast eastern wall of the home, so that's the front, what you see in the picture, the front wall on the right of the screen, and a couple of the interior walls. And then expanding the home to the rear, it will expand to the rear as well as to the setbacks, closer to the setbacks on the north and south side. As noted, they'll be demolishing the existing shed in the rear yard and replacing the landscaping. They are proposing a couple of new auxiliary structures. One is a foundation and reflecting pool, sorry, fountain and reflecting pool, and the other is an open-air pergola structure. Those are subject to design review tonight. They have a new ADU accessory dwelling unit at the very rear of the property and that is being reviewed ministerially as required by state law and the Yountville Municipal I'm going to go over a few of the design aspects of it that are in your packet for your review. One is the, the first is the garage setback for the home and the Yountville design standards note that garages should be set back a minimum of 10 feet from the house. In this case, and I have sort of a couple of diagrams highlighting in red the existing garage. The upper is, slideshow's the existing condition where the, the home is actually set back from the garage instead of the other way around. The porch is in line with the, with the garage right now. And I think if I slip back to that, the existing home picture, you can see very clearly that the porch just aligns with the garage. Because they're maintaining the existing garage, which is at the 20-foot setback, there's no way for them to set back the garage an additional 10 feet from the house. What they are proposing to do, however, is to bring the house up to the 20-foot setback line as well and then also construct a covered porch off of that front bedroom. And that would be eight feet into the front yard, which is the maximum allowed by code for encroachment of a covered porch into a front yard. And so the garage would be set back eight feet from the covered porch and in line with the house. And then they do have a recessed entry courtyard, which is in between those two sections. Staff is recommending that the standard be waived, which is allowed by the, within the ZDRB's purview by the design standards because it's an existing condition, but they are certainly improving that condition by not setting the house back further or maintaining the house where it is. The next design aspect for your review is the roof design. The design standards note that the main roof of a building shall have a minimum pitch of four in 12. The home is designed, has two gable roof portions that face the street that are 712, so they certainly exceed that. But the main roof form, which you can see the, it is a standing seam dark metal roof, is 3.75 to 12. I did speak with Director Heacock about this and he noted that he would be comfortable with it being rounded up. However, the code is very, pretty specific in terms of that metric. And so this is again, something that the ZDRB can waive as a design standard. The main roof in this case is not seen from the street. It faces the side yard of the two homes and there are two residences on either side. And so you wouldn't actually, you know, even from the side yard of that home, given the angle, you wouldn't see much of the roof of that main roof. I did speak with the architect and I know the homeowner is here tonight, the architect is not. He did note that they, the applicant can modify if you do want that main roof to meet the 412 pitch. It would raise the overall height, so the 712 pitch in the front would become a little bit steeper so that all of the eaves meet. But that is something they can do. And so that's something that we're requesting ZDRB review tonight. And I know one, one question which Erin and I were actually asking and if the board would like to comment on is, you know, the design standards say that the main roof of the building, and is that the main roof meaning the largest, which is what the 3.75 to 12 pitch we're showing in the image? Or is the main roof the one that is the most prevalent from the street? Either way, this application can meet the standard or if the main roof is that larger middle section, something that staff is supportive of waiving that standard, given the lack of, a lot of visibility of the roof. Other site elements that are going on, as I noted, there are two tree removal permit requests. One is the ficus in the rear yard and that is within the footprint of the expanded home. And the other is the ash tree in the front. They did look at saving that ash tree in the front to begin with. However, there are a number of new utilities, underground utilities that need to go through that critical root zone of that tree. And when we asked them to verify with the landscape architect and arborist, they do, they did realize that it would be impossible to save that tree. The design standards do require a minimum of one tree in the front. They are proposing a, a large mature olive right next to the front door entry, as well as some olive trees. And I know the applicant, and sort of the homeowner is here tonight and can speak to a little bit more on the landscaping as they've been working, continuing to work on it. But there are a couple of trees within the front kind of landscape area that is backed by a poticarpus hedge. We are, as staff, recommending, although the design standard is a minimum of one tree, that there at least be a minimum of two trees. And that would ensure that there's the mature tree in this planter area right next to the house, but that there's at least one tree out towards the street and providing some shade and whatnot to the front yard and interest at the sidewalk. And that's consistent with the applicant's drawings here tonight. Again, they're showing more than two trees. However, some of them aren't defined and so we just wanted to make sure that we did have that as a recommended condition. The replacement requirement for the trees is a total of 32 inches, so the two 16 inches of the trees being removed are added together. And the replacement can be met with a combination of trees on site. So if there's, say, two five-inch trees planted on site, then they would still need to meet 22 inches worth of tree with the in lieu fee. And so that is something we've also included in the condition of approval. The last element I want to review is the landscaping. We've talked a little bit about the front yard, the sort of darker line, it's again on this slide, and you can see it in color on the right, is a poticarpus hedge, which is a little bit taller. However, they are looking at stepping that down along the front walk so that you can still kind of see and understand where the front door is. And then having smaller planting along with the trees within the planting area up to the sidewalk. On the side, north and south, project north, project south, side yard, they are proposing Italian cypress hedges. Cypress hedges can get quite tall, 50 to 60, 70 feet when mature. And because it's a full hedge, we are recommending that it be a variety that doesn't get taller than 20 feet. As a solid hedge, we want to make sure that there's access to natural light for the property to the north. And also that the hedges are in scale with the structures along the street, which are all one-story homes, including this home. And then in terms of the auxiliary structures in the rear, they do, you can see the main house is in purple, the detached ADU, which is under separate EBU, is in orange in the back. And then in between is where they have most of their large panels of glazing, so those aren't visible from the street. And they do have a fountain and a shallow reflecting pool. That fountain is right now in the setback area and we do have a condition to adjust that so that it is a minimum of five foot from the property line as required by auxiliary structures. And then on the other side of the backyard, they have a detached pergola. That pergola is steel-framed and would be designed to match with the colors and the, some of the steel details that are on the structure. In terms of staff recommendation, just to review, and I'm happy to go into a little bit more detail on the actual design, but I know you all review your packets very thoroughly and have looked through the drawings. We are recommending approval that you first find the project exempt from SEQA under the sections noted and then approve the designer view and tree removal permit application. The key conditions that we are recommending is, again, that the foundation, the fountain be adjusted to conform to the setbacks. We, the town also generally has a standard condition that it recirculate for water conservation purposes and that it cannot be filled with potable water from the town. Limiting the height of the property line, cypress hedges, and that is something that we're asking for ZDRB review. There's a number of different species of cypress hedges. You can get them where they're eight to 12 feet. The 15 to 20 feet, which is what staff is recommending at a, at a maximum versus the full height of 60 to 70 feet. Limiting, and I'll go back to this, there is also along the, along the setback on the north side, there's a set of French doors coming out for the bedroom and there's a break in that hedge. And they have identified some artwork along the fence there. And we are recommending a condition of approval that the artwork be limited to eight feet. That's the same height as a, the fence with extension. Just to ensure that it isn't something super tall that looks a little bit odd from adjoining property. Requiring a minimum of two trees in the front yard and then remaining tree replacement would be a combination of whatever diameter they are able to replant on site and in lieu fee from the town's fee schedule. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Carrie, are there requirements for, I thought there was a list of pyrophilic trees that were not to be used in, in landscapes? I'm just concerned, the, the cypress trees, they're very flammable and they're very tall. It just feels like a, kind of a, an odd choice. So, but I thought they were on the list of trees that were...
You know, Terrell, let me check on that. I do, I know the list you're talking about, I believe it's online on the code and I will check while the applicant is giving your presentation. I was thinking of it more as a, I wasn't thinking of those trees, I was thinking of those hedge, hedge shrub plants.
Yeah.
Let me check on that.
Are there other questions?
I just have one question regarding the condition of approval for the height of the piece of art. Were the fences, I don't see it called out, are the fences going to be eight feet?
I believe the fence is called out to be a six-foot fence.
Okay, then I would, I would change that condition of approval that the artwork cannot exceed the height of the fence. And then if they just work with the neighbor and decide to go with the eight-foot height, then it could be eight feet. That was my only question right now.
Gentlemen? Nothing?
I just had one, yeah, I'm just more of a comment that, I mean, this was very clearly labeled as a remodel, not a new construction. So in general, any existing conditions with a remodel tend to be maintained. So that's my understanding, sharing out loud. And I wanted to kind of revisit the, the roof and the pitch. I mean, I guess did, did staff have a point of view on which, which roof is the main roof? You sort of posed the question, but I didn't know if you had done any further analysis.
Well, we looked, we looked through the code for definitions and didn't find anything like definitive, so I think it, it could honestly probably go either way. I think that at the end of the day, 3.75 compared to a 412 pitch is three inches and from a human eye standpoint, standing on the ground, you're probably not going to be able to tell, but...
That's true. It is a slippery slope. I mean, I would, my, my thought there is I would go probably more by area as opposed to prominence because prominence, I guess, is somewhat subjective. So that's my point of view there. The last question I have is, is there anything in the code that, for tree replacement, that allows for actual placement recommendations or is that a purely subjective thing? Because I noticed there was like, there was require two trees in the front, not, I mean, I think it's a good idea, but I don't know if we can...
I'll let Erin chime in as well, but, so the design standards are not related to tree removal, just the design standards require a minimum of one tree in the front yard. The tree ordinance itself, I believe gives the ZDRB, or the approving authority, some discretion on some of the, some of the components in terms of species and type and location.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
And Chair Miller, I have looked up prohibited trees. It is not on the list of, cypress is not on the list of prohibited trees. Although I... Although I, to sort of personally agree with you, they are a highly pyrophilic species.
It was on a list that I looked at, so, but I guess you're looking at the list that's in the code?
Correct, yes.
Does the applicant want to present anything? Hi.
Do we have, do we need to move our stand?
Oh, yeah.
Our stand is...
Aaron, do we need to move the stand so that we've got the mic there?
So, that should work.
Okay.
We had this debate before the meeting, and apparently, powers that be would like to try it there for...
Okay, great.
That seems weird.
Very far away.
All right. Good evening.
Hello.
My name is Tim Chen. I'm, my family and I own 36 Ivy Court. I have prepared notes that I could mention, but it seems like you guys are pretty well-versed with the project, so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, such as for the landscaping, or, I'm not so sure I can answer anything about the pitch of the roof, but, you know, if you have questions, I'm happy to discuss that with you.
Okay, great. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant?
Comments only.
Comments only?
No.
Okay.
What you can say later, I guess.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All good. All right.
Thanks.
Okay, so, are there any other public comments regarding this project now? All right, so, we can chat about it amongst ourselves? Any thoughts?
It would be helpful to see the conditions of approval slide again, if that's okay, because it differs from what we have in our staff documents, so it's just, that way we can reference it.
Or, hold on just a second.
I do have one question about what's shown on the plan. I thought the round thing that's colored the same way as the reflecting pool was the reflecting pool? There's something in the center of that courtyard that's a series of concentric circles?
Right. That, I think that was an older version, where we were going to do two water elements by the...
It needs to come up to the...
You need to, sorry, we need to...
We have a large crowd that's not here watching, so they want to hear all this.
So, I think you, you're looking at an older version of our plans. There were too many water elements going on in that courtyard, which isn't really that big, so we eliminated that. There should be a tree there, in that, the circular water area. And also, to the south of that courtyard, there should be another tree as well. I guess, you don't have the plan...
And I do have that updated planting plan, if you'd like me to show that as well.
Could you show that, Carrie?
Yep.
Oh, I see it, actually, on the last page.
I see, okay.
Yeah, staff had asked the architect to refine the planting plan a little bit, which is actually one of the reasons why we have the condition about the trees, is that they're specifying six-inch diameter trees, which is a little difficult to get. Even a 48-inch box is usually less than that, and so we just wanted to make sure that we were specifying, you know, that the tree planting was robust on the site, and so they did submit this revised set.
Do any of the fellow board members have any opinion about the location of the fountain in the, in the right away, or in the setback there?
Well, I think it's being, it has to be moved.
Okay, yeah.
That's one, part of the conditions of approval, that it has to be moved out of the setback.
The recirculation of the water, I think, is kind of obvious, given our water situation. The roof design, in my mind, is so nominal that it really is somewhat of a non-issue. I don't know if anybody feels differently.
Are we done with questions of the applicant?
I think we are done with questions of the applicant.
Actually, one quick one. Do you have any issue with two trees in the front? Is that, was that, I didn't check the plan, but...
No, actually, I'm planning on three.
Okay.
So, and the three would be the mature olive trees that would provide a, sort of a privacy screen for the front, from the sidewalk, as well as from the interior.
We always appreciate overachievement of objectives, so thank you.
Yeah. And if I could squeeze in a crepe myrtle, I wouldn't mind too, so, there you go.
Okay, so, I guess, thank you. That leaves me to, the issue that I have with this is the, the cypress trees that are kind of lined up like soldiers around the lot. The one thing that I, there's a couple issues with that. One is that I know that they are highly flammable in the information that I found, so I feel like it's a public safety issue, even if they're not on the list that are, are the trees that are regulated within our code. So, that concerns me. The other thing is, I know that the cypress trees are, they look, when one of them dies, they look, it looks obvious, it looks like you've lost a tooth, to give an odd analogy. And in the places on this lot where they've decided to hold out trees that are lined up, it feels like they're already creating that condition that's baked in. So, I just, I'm not, I'm not sure that that's the best solution for that landscape, and there are suitable alternatives, I think, with privates and English laurels and that kind of thing, that they get you the same kind of privacy. So I'm wondering about that decision, and I, I'm a little concerned about it, but I don't know if it's in our purview, really, to regulate that, if it meets the conditions. No, I would, I would say that...
It's okay, you don't, you don't...
Aaron, do you have any?
Yeah, I can defer to McKinsey as well, but I would say if the code doesn't prohibit the trees, then we don't, we don't have a basis to deny them.
What about the condition that we can limit the height that they're allowed to grow to? And how do we regulate that? How do we, how do we enforce that? Because they can grow 40 to 60 feet.
If you imposed a height, pardon me, if you imposed a height limit as a condition, then any violation of that condition would be a code enforcement matter that our staff would go out and, you know, issue a, usually a warning, then it could be an NOV, notice of violation, could be citations, penalties, fines, and eventually, if a court warranted it, you can go in and cut it yourself if approved.
Okay.
Can I double-check that? Are you suggesting that we, we could decide amongst us the height of every tree, and then that becomes enforceable code? That seems...
Well, landscape screening is within the purview of residential design standards, so when you're approving a design review, and if the condition isn't overly burdensome, disproportionate to the rest of the project, the applicant is willing to comply with it, and everyone agrees that this is what's been approved, then yes, it would be a code enforcement matter, because our code requires you comply with the permits you've been granted.
Yeah, I don't want to do that. I mean, I, I think it's crazy to arbitrarily start deciding tree height for every new property and then have a long list of code enforcement violations. I think that's a, it's a gap we might want to fill with the enforcement, just to be very direct.
I agree.
Can I say, with that decision, Carrie, so, we're talking about the cypress trees, and knowing that you want to do, as an applicant, right, a different species, if you will?
Is your mic on?
I don't, it is, yeah. I don't see how anybody would regulate that, because what happens if, I mean, I don't like, it'll use your point of if one tree dies, no matter what it is, and it's part of a hedge, if you will, well, how do you ever get that hedge to ever look like it's completely...
I think what Steve is saying, he would personally go and plant a new tree to avoid the gap. I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
Are you volunteering me?
I, no, I was interpreting, interpreting.
Well, my, my problem with the cypress is that the intention of many of our landscape standards are, are directed towards the front of the house, and not to let people build private enclaves that are separated from all their neighbors. And so we keep fences to three feet at the front, if they're along the property lines. You know, we don't let people block off their houses, and the, the cypress trees all the way around are kind of that look of not what Yountville is, building a private enclave, you know, with like a gate across the front, nobody can see, and, and I think that's what bothers me more than anything else about those cypress, along with all your concerns.
So, I would be inclined to approve the project, but request that they reexamine that choice of that species of tree?
Because we want to hear.
Yeah, I guess, I guess if you'd like to speak to that.
Yeah, I'll wait.
Okay.
So, I should, the whole concept of the landscaping is to evoke more south of France, particularly in Luberon and La Louve, which is a garden in, in that region. And they have lots of cypresses, but they're chopped off, they're horizontally cut.
Okay.
So, my use of the cypresses would not be to let them grow crazy high. It's to, it's just to evoke that sense of being in the south of France, and the plantings that they have. That being said, I'm happy to take a look at other plants as well, because that's not the only type of hedging plant that Luberon uses.
You're using them more as an architectural feature on a certain level, as opposed to just letting them grow to wherever they grow, you're keeping them very deliberately cut like a formed hedge.
Right, it's deliberate. I want that cut that looks, not like, you know, in Italy, Italian cypresses, they let them grow, you know, to 40, 50 feet. That's not what I'm intending on doing. Hearing that they're more flammable, it makes me think, because a lot of the materials that we are using for the house, you know, from the wood siding, which is, it's a koia wood, which is treated, it's more stable, we're going to get a flame retardant, you know, the metal, metal seamless roof, you know, it's, it's much more, it's much less flammable than using other, other materials. So, yes, we would be happy to maybe minimize the use of the cypress.
Okay.
You know?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a fair point.
Does anyone want to...
I think, I mean, just covering Carrie's points about, like, the garage, you know, and the setback of the garage, I think the intention of the standards are being, essentially, the intentions of the standards are being met. We're not wanting to approve houses that are garages with an attached house. You know, they have taken and done what they can as best they could. It will fit into the neighborhood, the garage doesn't stand out as the first thing you see. So I think, I think the guidelines can be, the standard can be waived to accept the positioning of the garage. And the pitch of the roof, I think, again, the intention is that we don't have flat-roofed or very unattractive-looking houses from where the majority of people can see them, and, and this isn't that. You know, they've put the fronts, the gables, to the street, so I think, again, we've met the intention of the standard without having to directly follow the standard. So I think both those are good choices.
I agree.
And, and it makes sense to me to give that some room, give that an approval.
I would, I tend to agree, but I would, I could even one-up it by making it more concrete, because I'm always a little skeptical about granting intentions over actuals, and that, the first is, because it's a remodel, they're not obligated to move the garage or do anything. So they've actually done a nice thing to try, but they could have done, they could have left the entire footprint the same, and that, that would have been fine, too. So that's, so that was a voluntary adjustment. As far as the gables, you know, I actually think the, when I look, I would go by surface area, and then when I look at the, the design, the primary roof is over the main building, just because it's setback doesn't make it less primary, so if you look at the square footage of the roof, that's the primary one, that meets the requirement, which means that we're, the, the code does not require us to enforce the pitch of secondary roofs, in which case we don't even have to grant sort of any intention on that. So it feels more, even more concrete.
Makes sense.
Mm-hmm. Shall we?
Are we ready for a motion?
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't have the resolution in front of me, but I will make, oh, here, I have the number. Motion to adopt the resolution number 25-22, conditionally approving design review for the house at 36 Ivy Court, with the emphasis of reevaluating the use of the cypress, and for keeping the artwork along the north fence line no higher than the fence.
So, to clarify, just so we understand the cypress condition, are you proposing that we maintain the presented condition, that if they do choose to print, to choose a cypress hedge, we follow what staff presented, they'll use a variety with a maximum mature height of 20 feet, but with a non-enforce, it would not be an enforceable condition to ask them to consider to change it? That's not something that we can tell them, you violated a condition?
My interpretation of the motion was that it would be granted as written by staff with an extra little nod towards consideration, but not making it a condition. That was my interpretation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, in that case, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a beautiful house. I look forward to seeing it.
I looked at that house many times, you know, that, so, yeah, it's going to be a jewel, because I'm like right down by there, yeah, it's, it's going to be a fantastic little cul-de-sac you're doing, so...
It'd be very nice.
All the other houses will be jealous.
Well, you know, a lot of landscaping actually comes from my neighbor and across the street, and, you know, like, they're using lots of cypress, not cypresses, olive trees.
Yeah.
It's kind of blended in, I think it's...
And La Louve is certainly a good example to follow, so, excellent, well, thank you.
A favor for you.
Thank you.
I have a question before item number two. Is there a third item after the second, or are we coming back for anything?
It's administrative, so no votes required, so I think, up to camp, or do they have to vote on it?
No.
I'm just gauging my time. I'd be, okay, all right. I mean, I'm happy either way.
Okay. Moving on to item B, we're looking at adopting the resolution number 25023, conditionally approving a design review and tree removal permit application for Two Talent Lane, and finding the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, and I believe we have a member that needs to recuse?
Yes, based on my proximity, I will recuse, and we'll look forward to seeing the results.
Proximity to your primary residence, correct?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this opens the public hearing, and Carrie, you are going to present to us once again?
Yes.
Take, take your time, Carrie, he hasn't left the room yet.
Okay, I'll just get the slideshow up.
Thanks, Michael.
Are we good to go, Sher Miller?
Yes, we are ready to go, thank you.
All right, thank you. So, Two Talent Lane is the next item before you. This, the scope of this project is to replace an existing house, a single-family house, and a detached garage, and replace it with a new single-family home, a new auxiliary structure, which is a pool, and new landscaping. They are also proposing a detached ADU at the rear yard, which is being reviewed separately as ministerial review, as required by state law and the Yountville Municipal Code. The applications before you tonight include designer view for the home and landscaping, tree removal permit for four trees, and a subsequent exemption under section 50- sections 15303, 304, and 15061B3. And some of you may recall this project who have been on the ZDRB previously. This site did have a prior application to do a lot split into two-story homes. The project, or the site has since hold, and the new owners are not interested in pursuing that entitlement. What they are looking at is before you tonight, which is maintaining a single-story, single-family home, replacing the existing smaller, slightly less than 900 square foot house. There is also a detached garage, which if you've been to the site, it has a deck. It may or may not be, have been converted to another use, but this application would of course demolish both of the structures and replace them. The project is also proposing to remove four trees for this project. There are two maple trees. The one, one in the front yard that you can see right in front of the porch, there is a pecan tree, which is a very large trunk on the south side yard. There's another maple on the south side yard and a cherry plum on the north side yard. There is also a tree being removed as part of the ADU, but again, that is part of that separate application review. This project also has a few specifics to the design for the ZDRB to consider. And once again, actually, is the roof design and the roof forms. I realize we have different ZDRB members here, so we'll go through the standard again. So the town's design standards require that the main roof of the building shall have a minimum pitch of 4 and 12 unless it's waived by the ZDRB as allowed by, by the designer view process. The home before you today, the design has two gable roofs facing the street. They are a 512 pitch, so they do exceed that standard. But the central main roof over the living spaces and the main part of the house is a 312 pitch. The, again, that's not highly visible from the street. You can see it from the south since the south, the south of this lot is a flag lot with the larger coast live oak and sort of that lawn area. But the pieces facing the street are 512. The applicant, I have spoken with them, and they can modify the roof if the ZDRB requires to increase that 312 roof slope to be 412. And they would do that by adjusting the plate heights and still meet the height limit for the site. And so that is a standard we are asking the ZDRB to review in terms of how to condition the project or to waive that standard. A second component to review, there is, similar to the last project, this home has a, the home comes out, the south side of this home has a bedroom that comes out to the 20-foot setback, and then they have a porch that encroaches into the front yard as allowed, is eight feet. You can see the tall foot setback, which would be, you know, eight foot, the eight foot limit of that porch. The porch surface in gray is at the eight foot encroachment. However, there are posts, a stone base and some, the columns and the roof covering that would need to be brought back to be in line with that maximum eight-foot encroachment. Staff has spoken with the applicant, and they're aware of this and fine with being able to make that adjustment. And so we have included that as a condition of approval to make sure that the porch conforms to the setback requirements. This is the same diagram, but also showing the garage design. So the, this project is proposing a two-car garage. Multiple garages, in accordance with the town's design standards, are discouraged from front yards. However, they are allowed if they're located either on the rear half of the lot, which this is not, or screened from view from the adjacent street frontages by the building placement, landscaping, or fencing. And in this case, I did want to address the fact that there is a detached garage in the back with access from an alley. That alley is not something that the applicant has a recorded easement rights for, and so they are not intending to replace that in any way. And they are looking at having both of their, all of their vehicle access from Town, Two-Talent, from Towne Lane, which is a private road, but obviously a public right-of-way that they have access from. What they have done for this is that they have split the garage bays. So they have the porch at a 12-foot setback, the front most garage bay, which is the southern garage bay, is at 22 feet, so it does meet that 10-foot setback from the front of the house, from that porch. And then they are setting back the second garage bay, that's the northernmost one, just over an additional five feet, so it's a 27-foot, just over 27-foot setback. This kind of sets it up back and tucks it behind the Valley Oak, which is one of the heritage trees we'll be discussing in a few minutes. And then they do have some additional landscape screening. There are some additional shrubs along that property line. And then they're proposing to do a landscape stone wall instead of a fence, but a wall in the front yard, and two mature olive trees, which would screen it from the south. Additionally, in terms of the garage door design, which you can see at the bottom of the slide, they are utilizing the same materials as, for siding as the rest of the house, as well as carriage-style doors that mimic the same materials, vertical wood siding. Those doors, the design standards for the town allow up to 12 feet. They're proposing eight feet wide for each of those to minimize the look of the garage door and the prominence of that. Additionally, they are looking at doing a gravel driveway with pavers. And so that would kind of help with the, you know, not having a very large two-car garage, concrete driveway approaching the garage, but will look a little bit more embedded into the landscape. And so that is something that staff is supportive of the design that they're proposing to minimize those, the multi-car garage, but still have it be located in the front yard. That is something that will require a ZDRB review tonight. The, just in terms of the tree removal, to review that, they are, as noted, looking at removing four trees. The trees are fairly large. Part of that is, you know, the pecan and the cherry plum are a little bit sort of larger than, in scale than the home. The replacement diameter is 84 inches, so not something they can likely meet on-site, but they can meet it on, with the combination of some on-site trees as well as the in-lufy. Their proposal is three mature olive trees. Two of them, you can see, are sort of central right at, right behind the front setback, or within the front setback, right behind the property line. And then the third is just north of the pool on the north, in the north setback area. Staff has provided a condition of approval that the, for the tree replacement to be a culmination of the on-site trees and whatever additional in-lufy is required for the remainder of that tree replacement. Two trees that we do want to talk a little bit about tonight are the heritage trees that are just off-site for this property. If you've been to the site, you certainly have noticed the coast live oak that is on the adjoining property. The slide, the photo at the bottom is actually from my site visit, and that's the neighbors, that tree is in the neighbors, the five lot for Six-Talent Lane. And they have some additional landscape, as you can see, with the decomposed granite yard and yard area over there. Right now, the detached garage has, you can see this, the horizontal siding for a deck that's back there. And you can, so that is on the Two-Talent Lane property, and you can see there is a significant overhang and drip line of the tree across the property. It's basically a property line tree. The other tree is a Valley Oak in the packet. I know the project applicant's arborist calls it a white oak. We have had our town arborist, Tony Walcott, review both of the trees, doing a site, both of these trees with a site visit, as well as review and the proposed construction and landscape architects' proposed mitigations to protect these trees. He is, has noted this is a Valley Oak in the front, and this is, as you can see, there aren't a lot of encroachment to this tree. However, it has had some utility trimmings from PG&E due to its proximity to the power lines at this point. The, we worked closely with the applicant on their proposed project in relation to these trees. The coast live oak in the back, they are proposing to remove the deck and removing any of the, basically the encroachments that are within the drip line of the tree and leaving the tree, the area beneath that natural. I think there's maybe like a quarter of an inch or so of fill. I have spoken with the town arborist on that, and he's not concerned about what is, what's being proposed underneath there, because it is basically native, no irrigation, no additional plantings. For the Valley Oak in the front, again, they're proposing a gravel driveway with pavers, excuse me, and part of that is to protect permeability of the soil within drip line of that tree. That will allow, you know, water to still go through, since so much of that tree, it does overhang the Two-Talent Lane property. They're also proposing hand digging in the area of the drip line, and if they do find major roots, as they're doing the work for the foundation or the driveway to do concrete bridging, where you actually bridge over major roots instead of cutting them or just covering them up so that they wouldn't get compacted over time. They've also worked with staff and relocated the utilities to be on the south side, so that there isn't any trenching within the drip line and critical root zone of that tree. So some of you may have noticed on the plans, there's, I believe the plans still mark the front as a utility niche right behind the garage. That will still be the refuse area, but the utilities are being relocated to the area on the south side of the plan. You can see there's a, there's another niche between the two restrooms on the south side. And so they're relocating utility trenching to be on that side to keep it away from the tree, and their mechanical will be within that niche. So as noted, our town arborist has reviewed the work, and he had a couple of additional conditions. Those have been included in the conditions of approval, along with the reiteration of the town's duty of care and additional duty of care for heritage trees. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the project with the conditions that they implement the tree protection measures for both the Valley Oak and the coast live oak trees that we just discussed. A tree protection plan will be required at the time of building permit, and that will have to show, describe what those measures are, but also show where tree protection fencing will be on the plan, and those get incorporated into the construction documents so that the contractor is aware of those requirements. We do have the condition of approval to adjust the porch encroachment on the south side of the front, of the house to be eight feet into the front yard and the requirement for the tree placement. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Carrie. Does anyone have any questions of Carrie?
No, but I think I saw Aaron doing some furious math.
You did. Thank you for noticing.
Guarding the roof, right?
I did. So for Commissioner Henthorn's benefit, during the last item before the board, there was an issue about what constitutes the main part of the roof, because we have, both the circumstances are very similar, where we have a gabled portion and a little bit flatter portion, and what was decided is whatever the greater massing is. And so I was feverishly doing some calculations here and can confirm that the 512 pitch is, there's more square footage than the 312.
Good.
Okay.
Good. Thank you for doing that.
Thanks.
I have no questions.
Nor do I. I don't have any questions either. Is there anyone from the applicant's group would like to say anything to us?
Yeah, I'm happy to get up and at least offer myself for any questions.
Okay, great. You were the architect?
Yes.
Excellent.
My name's Casey Hughes. I'm the architect. Matt and Amy Saab, the owners, are also here. And so, yeah, I'm happy to connect my iPad and put together the images or some of what you've seen, but I think I can start if you, you know, answer any questions you may have.
I guess the question that I have for you is, is there any issue with resolving the front porch issue that is a condition of, or suggested condition of approval?
No, we don't have, we had interpreted the code as saying an eight-foot front porch, and then somewhere in the code it says that encroachments like awnings and eaves and architectural elements can go another two feet. And so that was perhaps just a misreading of it. So if we're pulling it back by that, that's fine.
Okay, great.
So that it's the eight foot. And then in response to the roof pitch, I think we're understood there, so I don't need to go into that one. And, yeah, is there anything else, Matt or Amy, that you guys, well, I can be available if there's.
Okay, great.
Comments as we go.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're pretty set.
Yeah. I got a comment about, and I think in this case, it actually works to your credit having it the opposite of the last presentation. I think having that, that shorter pitch, if you will, on the main roof, if you will, works out really well.
That was actually the driver behind it, was we felt like, and Carrie and Aaron in one of our first meetings had asked us to reduce the mass of the roof, and so we did that with lowering that pitch. And then it came back like, well, you lowered it a little too much. So I think.
I look good.
Well, great.
Very nice.
Thank you. We're available for more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's a lovely solution.
Totally.
Like to the garage setback. Again, the intention is not to have a giant garage taking over the look. And so the way you have separated it and dropped it back is just beautiful.
If I can interrupt, if we're going to move on to the discussion phase.
Oh, I thought we were, sorry.
Can we ask for a public comment? I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You're right.
Anybody in the audience like to make a public comment about this project? Okay. Thank you.
No, I'm, I'm good with all the, thank you for being so cooperative with staff and following the guidelines and listening and working together. It's much appreciated, and then the result is lovely.
Yeah. Thank you.
It's a beautiful project, and you're meeting all the conditions that are required, so I'm in full support. I think the garage solution is great, so.
Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Excellent.
To accept it just like it is.
I'll second that.
With the conditions of approval as listed?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Another nice addition to town and to that neighborhood.
Yeah.
Thank you, Carrie and Erin. I don't know if Carrie can hear me, but we appreciate it.
She waved.
Thanks, Carrie.
All right. Moving on to item nine, administrative items. Nine A, receive a report on proposed amendments to the zoning and design review board bylaws, governing board membership, appointment, and resignation. I'm calling on Acting Town Clerk Noriega to present the staff report.
Thank you.
Doesn't look like we're going to have any members of the public to comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, or maybe closer to evening, chair and board members. Today before you, we have new proposed amendments to your existing zoning and design review board bylaws. Staff proposed the addition of the membership section, and that includes important additional information regarding the membership, the appointments to the board, the terms of office, the resignation of members. And that redline version is included in your staff report attachment, as well as the clean version, and the amendment will be brought forward to our town council for approval on the meeting, the regular meeting of Tuesday, February 18th, which is next week. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Does anyone have any questions of Carrie right now regarding this? I did not.
So, I'm sorry, I did not see this part, so I didn't read it beforehand. So we are removing the red parts?
We're actually adding them. Yeah, and Jason has.
I'm lying, but it's not, okay.
Yeah, Jason has graciously put this on the screen for you if you need to reference it as well.
I brought it up.
Fantastic.
I just didn't, I apologize for not going through it. Okay, that all makes perfect sense to me.
And I suppose we'll note for the record that we do not have members from the public for public comment.
Yes. And that we are missing one member, but will you reach out to him and, and ask him to review this and if, if he has any questions?
I certainly can. I would hope that he, he had, but perhaps not, but I certainly will.
Okay. Yeah. Or would that be under my purview?
No, I'm happy to do it.
Okay. Okay, good. Excellent. Are there, moving on, are there staff and board reports?
I have nothing to report this evening.
Okay. Excellent. Then it leads us to number, item number 11.
Ken's specialty.
Ken?
Yes.
Have you any motion?
This is a motion to adjourn.
Yes. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.